The time is 7:15 PM. This is the Littleton Zoning Board of Appeals. Our fourth order, the meeting of Thursday, August 21st, 2014. We're in the Littleton Town Offices Room 103 at 37 Shattuck Street, Littleton, Mass. The first order business is minutes, and we have some minutes from past meetings. The first set is a red line set of minutes from January 7th, 2014. They were modified after a reading of them. Bill, do you have comments to them?
I didn't see the red lines.
Oh, I had sent the red line copy last in the last one's packet, so I think I just made one.
Do you want to go over your comments? And then...
The second paragraph that says Chair Gould, the second line toward the end says which includes himself, Edward, and Alan Bell with consultant Ed Marshant. I don't know if they can pick up the red line. Second page, minus way in the bottom paragraph that says the board next discussed agility to convert one of the apartment buildings. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine lines down. So far out of what building code it should be zoning by law allows. How the building code is the by law?
I don't have it yet. I don't have it yet. What else is worded around it?
Chair Gould asked if two years would deter financing?
Yeah.
Cheryl Hollinger stated that buildings are so far out of what the zoning by law allows.
Thank you.
And those are the only two things that I picked up.
Okay, I made quite a few other corrections. So Cheryl, I'm going to give this back to you with his on my red line and just accept all changes and circulate it around. We can discuss it at the next meeting for a vote. Okay, then we have the minutes of March 3rd, 2014. You think it's a minute and a half?
No, I haven't had the chance of time to read it.
Okay, then so much for the minutes. Do we have any mail, any business or all business? What do you have for hearings in the next month so far?
Two. One for special tenant, one, they're both coming in the end of this week. One for special credit, existing nonconforming lot. And one for to become a legal to family. And had a zoning decision years ago, but then they never went through with getting the building permits, so he just has to reapply.
So neither of those are advertised yet?
Yeah.
Okay. Next month, we have just some meeting discussion, meeting date discussions to be had, so we can talk about that later on in the meeting. Bills to pay, bills to sign? Quite summer, huh? Anybody else have anything to report on any subcommittee? Anything for the Housing Committee, Jim?
They have a draft housing production plan, which I printed off a copy. I didn't bring it, but, you know, I haven't gone through it yet, but, you know, I will and I'll report to you about it.
Thank you. How's the track queen practice going?
Excuse me?
How are the track practices going?
Good. We've had our first practice today.
Can't do anything till the posted time of 7:30, so... Maybe just have to wait until 7:30 to go in further. Does anybody have a report on Omni's development? Why don't you put a section in the building department?
So the permits have been issued for the apartment buildings and the clubhouse. There's so far, seven permits have been issued for the 40B single-family houses. The wastewater treatment permit has been issued, and according to the developer for the single-family houses, he has 18 under agreement, so he's been bringing about three in a week.
Wait, 18 of the 40B houses are under agreement? But doesn't he have to do one affordable every four? So he's going to have to get going on a lottery?
Yep.
What's going on with the lottery discussions?
I got an email from, you know, asking if when the packets were ready, if we could put them up on the website and, you know, as well post on the website and have copies in the office. So, yeah, a lot of the permit, you know, they're getting them in and Roland is just making his checklist of what else he needs in those packets, so we need some of those to finish with, and we have that discussion that they now have to do off-market.
Three affordable permits?
Yeah. No, three market rate, so now we have to do an affordable permit.
We saw the regulatory agreement get filed, so I think that was the last outstanding matter, but Rod raises the question about whether Seal Harbor needs to come in and be a successor.
I'll have Roland read through that again.
What's that?
I'll have Roland read through that.
And then what about the 40As? Do you know anything going on in back?
40A, three permits have been issued, and he just brought three more in, just put the bond in, so he's going to be starting the road.
What were they doing on the road?
Do we know when the lottery is going to be open for the low income?
No, but I'll send her an email tomorrow and just ask, you know, if she's got the packets ready.
That'd be good. Could you let me know when they are? Because I know some people who should, but they're hat and they're wearing this little sleeve.
Is that clock right? Seven twenty-five?
About seven more minutes. That might be a minute fast.
It's always fast. Seven twenty-three.
Except when the cases start, then it slows down.
I know, but when I'm trying to get here on time, it's always fast.
I had anticipated having lots of such as minutes for you to review.
I think we'll deal with it. Do we have at least draft minutes that people can see on the website, so if people have questions?
If you want me to, I can put them on the website. I generally don't put them up till they're accepted, but...
But they're available in the office to be seen if somebody has questions.
The day after the meeting, I'll print them up. I have them in a folder.
Can I ask, Sarah, what hearing are you here for?
To observe.
That's fine. That's fine. I just wanted to be sure if you were a later one, I gave you some indication of when we'd
There's a bunch of minutes here. You not ready to go over them?
No.
I was awful glad to see that we, I was awful glad to see that the permits got pulled for the big apartment buildings out back.
Yeah, which means we hit, I think we said 12% now on the title.
Really glad to see that.
Twelve point something.
It's close enough to time, so Acting Vice Chair, Mr. Finesworth, I will have to recuse myself from the next hearing, so I might as well step out now. I have conflict.
Acting Chair, I am in the butter, so I have to step down but not leave the room. And I can still speak, I'm told.
For the rest of the board and the audience, before I open the hearing and pick voting members, I do have a disclosure statement to make, which we will cover prior to opening the hearing. But I need to wait until, very close to the time, avoid into such.
Can I ask you about this bill? So, I've never seen this before. Yeah, I was wondering.
I'll explain. Which I can do, I mean, it's almost at 7:30 and the hearing is scheduled to open at 7:30, so prior to that, disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest. In review of the documents submitted with the upcoming case, I noticed that a building permit for the original house was issued in 1981 by Mr. James Cummings, the then Building Inspector, which is Exhibit 5 of the application in the package. Mr. Cummings left the employ of the town of Littleton after that date, and I became the Building Inspector at that time. In 1984, I, William Finesworth, performed and signed the building permit guide for the final approvals and occupancy approval. Through Mr. Bergman, I contacted town council. In regards to where my name appears on the building, original building permit, if there would be any question of conflict of interest. In consultation with town council and Mr. Bergman, no, they agreed and, you know, there appears to be no conflict of interest, but in the interest of all fairness, a disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest has been filed with the town clerk, the board of management, and the zoning board of appeals, and that's the form that's in your packet. It's also available through the building apartment office. I have not 1984 nor now any financial interest in the property. I have no relationship or affiliation with the petitioners or the abutters. Given this information, are there any objections to me sitting on this board for this case and voting? The petitioners, any objections? Okay, the Valleys, I believe, are not here tonight. The board, are there any objections to me sitting on this board and voting in this case? Okay, thank you. All right, being at the hour of 7:30, I'm opening the hearing, zoning board of appeals, case number 834A, Michael and Colleen Lolee.
Lolee.
Okay. I've been struggling with that for, oh, wait. For variance under Article 6, Section 17327, general regulations and Section 17328, street frontage exception at 76 The Hatterline Road. Before I get into any of this, voting members, myself is a regular member, Mr. Cantino and Mr. Yates are regular members. I would like to appoint Mark Sossier and Rod Stewart, because they're the senior alternate members of the board, except being on the voting. All right, next, there has been a letter that's in part of the package submitted by the Allens, and which, now before we get into the presentation and everything else, that they have, a letter of August 9th, 2009, this letter has been given to board members and has also been given to the petitioner and their lawyer, in which they are requesting to postpone it until September meeting because they are on vacation and unable to attend tonight. They feel that they have a strong stake in this case, and the outcome may affect them. Right? I have had a lot of conversations with town council in regards to this. The board does not automatically have to allow a continuance. The board can go forward, you know, with a hearing with the parties present, but because of the nature of this case, the nature of previous cases involving this property and the parties involved, it is felt that, you know, that due consideration could be made of a continuance to win, all interested parties could be present. We have reached out to the petitioner, and I asked him once again, did the petitioner, would you accept a continuance to sometime in September, not necessarily the next board regularly monthly hearing on, in September, but to some other time that's convenient to all parties, including the board?
Member of the board, I'm Attorney Mark Darling, and I represent the Lolees. We do object to continuance. The notices went out to everybody, certified mail is the law required, and time for appearance is here tonight. The Allens did send in a letter asking for the continuance. They also stated their position there. I submit the board can consider their position as stated in the letter. They also submit that they didn't really object to the variance that is requested. What they did was they suggested that perhaps there's some hidden agenda or something, which there really isn't. Exactly what it appears to be on its face, and we're simply asking for variance to maintain a status quo. We're not asking to build anything, change anything, we just want ratification from the CBA of the status of the property that exists now as a result of a decision of the land court last year. So our official position is that we would like to go forward tonight and vote on our
The Allens did state in their letter, that the closing statement, that they don't even understand why the petition is being entertained in the first one. First of all, it's being entertained because the petition has been filed with the board, and we do have to deal, you know, hear the case and make a decision upon it. So, again, because of the nature of the property, the nature of cases and court cases that have preceded this hearing and this petition, you know, I strongly feel that in the best interest because, you know, there's maybe legal action later on, that Allens have submitted quite a written document. But the thing is that they would not be privy to the discussions, questions that come up, they are not going to be here to ask questions of any discussion that does take place. Also, two, and I understand the position of the petitioner to move forward as quick as possible, but the thing is that, what I'm suggesting is that if we could hold a hearing in two weeks, where all parties be involved, maybe the process would be more expedited than if we go forward tonight and then get into a legal challenge. And also, two, to find out if there are any serious objections to this. Again, you know, other than waiting one full month, would the petitioner be willing to accept a continuance somewhere that they put up two weeks?
You put us in a bit of a difficult position. I don't think the Allens have a bona fide objection here, and they went away on vacation knowing that this hearing was coming up, and so they chose not to be here. They would like everybody else to make it more convenient for them by scheduling it on another date, and we've been in litigation with them for five years. We settled our litigation with them, and this is one of the last threads that we're trying to wrap up. So you'll understand if we're not very understanding of their need to be a way when this business needs to be conducted. So officially, no, we don't agree.
Okay. I just needed to ask a question and give you the opportunity. Board members, do you have any questions or comments in regards to the idea of a continuation?
Just backing up one thing and choosing me as a voting member, I'm not going to be able to make it on Thursdays because of my cross-country coaching responsibilities, so I respectfully ask that another alternate...
Any Thursdays, including, well, it may not necessarily be up a Thursday night.
Okay, if it's not a Thursday, I'm fine, but I mean, if the possibility that it is going to be on a Thursday, I would not be able to make it.
If there were to be a continuation, if, we haven't run that by yet, I have also checked with the council to when the availability is, and it may not necessarily be on a Thursday night, if there is a continuation, be on a date that's agreeable to all members.
Okay, I have a question. I'm not exactly sure what this is at this point because it hasn't been presented, but if they're not making any changes to the property, first, what are the ramifications if we go ahead and approve it, or, and what are, second, what are the ramifications if we went ahead and didn't approve it? In other words, if the ramifications aren't very severe, maybe we don't have to consider continuing.
If we continue tonight, and do not go for a continuance, but we hear the case and make a decision tonight, that if there is an objection and someone could file an appeal to get tied up in court, we get as which way goes, okay? If we approve, someone could say they're agreed and file an appeal in court. If we disapprove, the petitioner or someone else could file an appeal and go to court. So, now just trying to keep everything as clean as possible, then try to lessen as much as possible any further court action. That was the point.
No, I understand that. That's not more what I was asking for. If the Allens have issues, what does it mean to them if we were to approve or if we were to deny?
That is a major question that needs to be presented to them. In consultation with town council and everything else, if it doesn't come up through the hearings, it is one of the questions that would be asked. We don't know.
Is it possible to open the hearing tonight, have a presentation by the Lolees, and then just continue it to the next meeting where the Allens may be able to, I mean, not close the hearing tonight?
Again, any continuance needs be with the agreements of the petition. And once again, by standard regulations and procedures, yes, that could be done, and the petitioner, and then we could say, okay, we wanted to continue. If the petitioner does not agree to the continuance, but we still continue, that gives them the basis for an appeal. So, you know, it's, Cheryl.
Speaking as in a butter and not as a member of the ZBA. It's a fairly straightforward case, pretty simple. The Lolees have their attorney here tonight and have the expense of their attorney here tonight. It does seem like the Allens made their choice not to be here tonight, and that perhaps in all fairness, the board should continue with the hearing.
Okay. All right, Bill, the question had to be asked. All right, therefore, board feeling, I'll take a poll before I even ask, in favor of continuance or not? Or do you go forward and you hear the case?
I think we should hear the case.
Cantino?
Hear the case.
Mr. Sossier?
Yeah, I would like to hear the case.
Mr. Stewart. Allen?
I'd hear it.
Patrick? Okay. We will go forward. All right. In that regards, first of all, this meeting is being taped, and I don't know if it's being televised, but I know it is being taped, so that if anybody who is not present can watch it and see what the proceedings were and what happened, and there is a video record. Okay? Again, the procedures for the hearing, okay? You only speak when recognized by the chair. We can only, because of the audio and the taping, only one party to be speaking at a time. The order will be the applicant, the board members, the questions or comments, town officials if present, abutters, and anyone in the audience. Before speaking, other than board members, please address, let us, now give your name and address for the record, for our secretary and for the video recording. I'll address all questions and comments to the issue at hand. Also, two, please keep all questions and comments polite and civil. All right, that being said, petitioner.
Mr. Finesworth, before we start, I'm going to have to completely recuse myself. Mr. Frank, before we start, I'm going to have to completely recuse myself, just in the face of appeals and possible issues, and leave the room.
Okay, very good.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Attorney Mark Darling. I've not spoken to this panel before. How do you do this? You want me to sit at this table?
Yeah, do it too. Also, too, the camera will pick you up, the video, the audio will pick you up, make your presentation to anybody in the audience who would, you know, would be interested.
I have a plan that I intend to use as a way of illustrating our issues. I said it there, is it?
Sure.
Yeah. I understand the panel has received our petition and reviewed it, so do I need to go through that with you, explaining the details?
I think, though, for clarity, because of the sensitivity of the case and everything else, if you can give a synopsis, an outline of it, we don't need all the exactness, but there is some points in there that do need to be made.
That's why I brought the plan. Michael and Colleen LaLeve bought their home at 76 Tohawon Road in 2005. Their property is, the green property is shown on that plan, and that plan is a 1979 plan done by a surveyor named Pearlie, and it was a subdivision plan from a larger piece that identified that lot. The people who owned it at that time subdivided it, and then their name was Kotanchik, and they sold it. No, their name was Flannery, and they sold it to Kotanchik. And a house was later built on it, and the locations you see on that plan. And that house is what the LaLeaves purchased in 2005. The Allens, not here tonight, own a home on the pink square. Their lot came actually out of the same parcel of land that was a farm back in the 40s and 50s owned by a farmer named Brown. He had designed a subdivision, sold the frontage lots, including one, to Mrs. Allen's mother and father named Wesby. He held onto the backland there, he had a plan for a hundred or so lots for a subdivision, and apparently abandoned it because of perk problems and never built anything. He then made this sale to the Kotanchiks, and then they built, they divided off this piece and kept the rest, and then later the remainder of the parcel was sold. But, so this house that the LaLeaves live in is on the, on the light green square, and the Allens are at the pink square. Then, what happened is, in 1973, Mr. Brown, who had sold the pink parcel to Allens and who still owned everything else, gave the Allens what's in blue, a little sliver of land there. That triggered something called the derelict fee statute. And that statute essentially provides that when landowner sells a piece of property on a public, on a, on a street, it's presumed that he's conveying the fee in the street along with the land, even though it's not referenced in the deed, unless he reserves the fee in the conveyancing instrument. Well, the deed to Mrs. Wesby back in 73 didn't reserve the fee, and by operation of that statute, the street, the paper street showed on a 1959 plan done for Mr. Brown for the subdivision that he never built, resulted in this land here, the lower part, and all the frontage of that lot going by operation of law to Mrs. Wesby in 1973. That was even before the house was built on the LaLeaves' property. Nobody ever picked up on that until 2006. And so from 1973 until 2006, nobody realized that the frontage on what is now the LaLeaves' lot was not owned by the people who thought they owned it. The house was built, there's a pool there and a shed. The house changed hands several times over the years. Lawyers, title examiners, banks, mortgages, all of this usual stuff happened, and nobody ever caught on to the derelict fee statute's operation until Mrs. Allen tumbled to it after the LaLeaves had bought their house. Mrs. Allen then brought a lawsuit against the LaLeaves. I'm not going to give you all the details there, because, believe me, we've been at it for five years, and there was an awful lot that happened. But she brought a lawsuit in the land court, and the land court had a trial, and the result of the trial was that they ruled that the derelict fee statute vested title in Mrs. Wesby, who had then passed it on to Mrs. Allen. So that's how that happened. So as of last year, when the final decisions of the land court were made, the LaLeaves were left with a piece of property here, their house on it, their pool on it, a shed on it, but no frontage and no access to the public way to Tohawon Road, except by a 10-foot wide easement that the land court had granted as part of their decision. So the, just to recap that, the land court gave the fee in the property to the Allens and the LaLeaves a 10-foot wide easement for access. So we come before the board now, asking you essentially to bless this. We're looking for a variance that recognizes that the lot doesn't have frontage and access by easement 10-foot wide only, which is recorded in the Registry of Deeds along with the decisions of the land court, and allows the ongoing use of this parcel that the LaLeaves have for residential purposes, as well as the accessory uses with their pool and their storage shed. And that's all we're asking you to do. That's actually the condition on the ground now since the land court decision. The reason we think we need the variance is that we want to market and sell the property. As you can tell, there's not good blood between the Allens and the LaLeaves. The LaLeaves would like to place the property in the hands of a real estate broker and sell and move. Without the variance, it's very difficult to market this property and find buyers willing to step into this predicament. So the variance will be a very substantial financial benefit to the LaLeaves, and that's what we're looking for. We don't ask you to permit us to build anything or expand the non-conforming nature of this property at all. We're not asking to put an addition on or improvement in any way. We're just asking that you issue a variance that permits the continued use of this property as a single-family home without frontage and access by easement only. And that's essentially the case. I can answer any questions you have.
In regards to a variance, there are certain criteria in, you know, that need to be met or discussed for the board to consider in granting or not granting.
That's right.
One of them is hardship, which I believe you've already covered. That is due to soil shape or topography. Can you cover that?
Sure. The, first of all, the shape of the lot, it's a three and a half acre lot, and we've lost the frontage. So going to the shape right away, we've got a nice, now fairly rectangular lot, but absolutely no frontage. We lost the handle of this hammerhead lot. And so I think that is about all I really need to say on shape. We did not create this shape. The other, the other thing on hardship I just will mention is that what happened here is not to be placed on the LaLeave's shoulders. They did not cause any of this. They bought a house with the bona fide belief that they were getting frontage that was fully compliant with the town's bylaws. And I attached to the petition the site plan that was, this plan, as well as their taped survey, which they had acquired when they first purchased the property, which showed 102 feet of frontage. I attached the assessor's plan, which shows 102 feet of frontage, and I can represent to you, and I didn't include them, that every owner before them had actually gotten very similar plans. We developed them all during our litigation, so we know that there was adequate frontage when this lot was developed back in the 1970s and early 80s, but they lost the frontage because of the decisions of the land court, which they were not to be faulted for.
And the decision of the land court was in 2013?
Well, there was actually two of them. They're both attached. There was a summary judgment decision. This is why I can go on for hours, believe.
Yeah, yeah.
There was a summary...
There's a lot of, lot of information here.
There was a summary judgment decision early on. The lawsuit was filed in, in the land court in 2008, and the summary judgment decision was, let's see, October of 2010. And then after that, just so if you, in the interest of satisfying your curiosity, the LaLeaves weren't given up, and they had filed a counterclaim against the Allens, seeking a judgment from the land court that they had reacquired what they lost by operation of the derelict fee statute by adverse possession. That case was essentially this argument. They and all the people who had owned their property before them since it was first divided off, had used this piece that has the frontage on it for their driveway and access to the public way. Their utilities are underground there and own that property. They had maintained it, and they tried to convince the land court that because of that, in the rule of adverse possession, over 20 years had gone by, and therefore asked the land court to make a ruling that vested titled back in them. So essentially, they said, okay, we lost it, but we want it back, and we think the law is with us on this. And they actually had a couple of day trial, and the land court where multiple witnesses testified, including the Allens and the LaLeaves and other people who had lived on the property over the years. And the land court ruling went against the LaLeaves. So that's the reason there's a 2010 and then a 2012 decision. The ultimate decision was on the second part of it, the adverse possession count, so. I'm still confused about, oh, I'm sorry.
So with this, okay, trying to get very clear as to what's being asked. There is not, actually, no frontage at all?
None at all.
But there is a 10-foot easement strip?
Yes.
And that is what is indicated in blue?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope. The, the blue is the, the piece of land that the Wesbies acquired in 1973 by gift from Mr. Brown. That's what triggered the derelict fee statute's operation. That effectively meant that with this blue went the whole fee in the street, the paper street from the 1959 plan. The LaLeaves driveway, as it, as it existed until very recently, came in here and went up kind of at an angle to the house front. It was a gravel driveway, it wasn't a paved piece of property. Since the land court decision, we've negotiated with the Allens. They wanted the easement, the 10-foot wide easement moved to the property line, and so we agreed to that and have had a new plan drawn, and the planning board recently approved it, and it's recently been recorded. It's the very last page of the submission.
Is that called Exhibit A?
It is Exhibit Nine.
Exhibit Nine, okay.
Okay. That shows you, Exhibit Nine shows you, there's a dotted line marked on the south side of what is now the Allens' land. That is the location of the easement.
So you're asking for a variance from the 150-foot required down to?
Zero.
Zero. But we do have an easement, so there is access to the property.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Board members, questions?
And, and, and I think the easement, the variance also needs to approve the continued use and occupancy of the property for residential purposes. It is, it's the historic use of the property. We're not asking that that be changed. So I just want to be clear about that. It's not, it's not just not having frontage, we want, we want the use ratified as well. And we think that's necessary because it's a landlocked piece essentially now.
But if the variance is created for the frontage, then you basically meet the requirements of frontage and size?
Right.
So that the use would be protected anyway.
I hope so, but I'm just trying to make sure the record's clear. Remember, we're marketing to buyers who are going to have to buy a lot that is not showing any frontage, and we're going to end up with people questioning, well, can I, what can I use this for? And so if the variance spells it out, that's clear. And so we're asking for that as well.
Okay.
I have lots of other information, so if you have questions, I'm happy to field them. Did you have a question, sir?
I had a question. Is the nonconformity 35 feet? Because, you know, the hammerhead lot allows you 35 feet frontage if you have a full width frontage on each side of it. Is that what we would be granting relief from, or the, because it never had 150 feet frontage, did it?
Never, but remember, this was done back in the, this plan was 1979, so I think your frontage requirements back then were different.
It's 50 feet.
Yep.
The way, if you look at the plan, you'll, closely, you'll see, and you have a copy in your files, it's 50 feet wide here, and then this flare is out here, and each of those was 25 feet.
When was the property originally developed, 1959?
This plan was, this, this plan...
No, when was the original property with the 50-foot frontage, lot?
Was subdivided out of the larger piece in 1979.
1979, okay.
The, the original subdivision plan, which Mr. Brown prepared, was, that was in the 50s.
Yeah.
There was nothing built on that plan.
And would you, so you're referring to the derelict fee statute?
Yes.
Would you consider that a unusual, is it an unusual condition on a property to be subject to this type of judgment?
Well, you know, I mean, unusual? That's, that's a, that's kind of a loaded question, if you don't mind my saying so. It is, it is in the law, it was a statute passed...
Well, I'm sure it's to the pleasure of attorneys that it exists, but...
I can tell you, it's rarely encountered.
Okay.
And so maybe that helps you.
Okay, that's a better word.
It is, it is a statute that we all have to deal with. It's not one that we deal with every day, because this situation doesn't happen very often, so.
So it would, it's not surprising that it went through so many transfers without this being...
That's right. And I'll, and I'll mention to you that the statute was newly passed just before the 1973 transfer. And so at that point, I mean, I was only 17 years old at that point, but at that point in time, conveyancers didn't have much experience with it, so that probably explains why it didn't come up for quite a while. Mrs. Allen didn't know that she owned that land until after the LaLeaves moved in. It wasn't like she thought she owned it, and then the LaLeaves moved in and started using it. The people, the LaLeaves and all the people before them had a driveway running up the middle of it, so. There was a dispute about where the exact boundary was that kind of started the dispute with, between the Allens and the LaLeaves, brought them to lawyers, who then figured out this derelict fee statute issue.
Basically, it was like 2006, where they realized that this was happening.
Yes.
Okay. Jeff, you have?
Yes.
John?
I don't have any questions.
Allen?
I'm just trying to understand the beginning of this. Brown owned the whole piece, the pink and the green at some point?
Brown owned, I forget the total acreage, it's 70-some-odd acres, I believe.
Okay, but this, this parcel, or these combined parcels here were all his. So he sold the green part off, and he sold the pink part off?
Right, pink part, way before. He sold the pink piece to the Wesbies in the 50s.
Okay, and at that point, it included all of the bottom of that, in other words, that, that the, the handle?
No, no, no. In the 1950s, the Wesbies bought this.
Just the pink piece?
Just the pink piece, that's why they did it in different colors.
Right.
In 73, Mr. Brown owned everything, the 70 acres plus beyond here, and he gave this blue piece to the Wesbies for a dollar.
Mm-hmm.
And we believe, we don't know, because he's not around to ask, but we believe what he was doing is that the paper street was here, and he was giving them all the land between where their property line was and the edge of the paper street.
So the derelict fee statute only arises because there had been at one point in the past a paper street there?
Right.
Otherwise, it would, this wouldn't be.
Right.
And the paper street was never accomplished and was actually abandoned long before this was...
Abandoned long before any, any house was built on the LaLeaves' property. The subdivision plan was approved by this board, and I think 1959.
And, and if that little strip hadn't been conveyed, it wouldn't have been engaged either?
That's right.
Okay.
It was, it was that dollar gift that caused all this trouble, so.
Allen?
But I'm just trying to understand, so Mr. Brown would have sold basically that interior piece, the interior green piece, knowing that it was... the interior green piece, knowing that it was landlocked and nobody could really access it?
If he had known, if Mr. Brown had known about the derelict fee statute, we don't know what he would have done, but it's clear that, I don't, he did not retain the fee in the road when he conveyed, maybe this will help you, help you. When he conveyed this blue piece to Mrs. Westby in '73, the instrument, the deed that he gave her, did not retain the fee in the road, in this paper street. So that's why the derelict fee statute applied. Then, later, and I forget the timing on this, he conveyed everything else he owned, including this. This was not a subdivided lot at that time, but he included everything else that he owned to cochant, cochant, I guess, sorry, I'm mispronouncing that. And they then tried to develop a plan on this property, couldn't find adequate perks. They then sold to Flannery, who subdivided this piece and started building a house on it. They sold it to Cowett, who actually built the house. So you can see it changed hands a number of times. I don't think anybody ever realized that the derelict fee statute was an issue until 2006. Not that they couldn't, I mean, it was there, the, the law was on the books and somebody studying the title might have found it, but nobody did.
Allen, was it? Right?
I still don't get it, but that's okay.
Well, well, Allen, they, the, the, the Allens, what, the pink is what they bought. And through this legal technicality, they've now gained the, the, the green thing. But it, it, it's what I would think fairly called a technicality. It wasn't, they, they never bought it, it was awarded to them.
So why would it have been awarded to the pink instead of the green?
Good question.
That's my question.
I will tell you, this statute was passed to prevent developers who were building subdivisions from selling off the lots at the back without building the streets and then abandoning the project. So you had a bunch of lots that were landlocked essentially. But the statute's language is that it's presumed that when you convey away a lot on a street, you're conveying the fee in the street along with the lot unless you retain it, specifically retain it. And in this instance, it actually works in exactly the opposite of what the intentions were for the statute. Because this resulted in a landlocked piece rather than preventing it.
Yeah, that's just.
So on the plan that you're showing us, that which is in green, which is the entire lot as well as a strip, some X number of feet Y comes right up to the street as frontage. Are you saying that the current owners do not own that part of the property?
The LaLeaves do not own this anymore. Since the land court decision was made, this piece is now owned by Mrs. Allen.
Okay, along with the blue strip and then the pink?
Right. They own essentially this whole rectangle there now. The LaLeaves have a right to pass over 10 feet wide to have access to the house.
And that's what's shown on the plan, that's the last page of the application, yeah.
Yes, and that's, that's, that last plan, page of the submission shows you exactly what's on the ground now.
Okay.
And that, that plan was just recorded at the Registry of Deeds, I don't have the open page yet.
And you mentioned that this has gone before the plan, or?
The plan was, it was an A and R plan, went before them, I forget the date on it, early June, I think, yeah, the, the plan is dated June 26th, so it was 2014.
Right, any further questions?
Yeah, a couple. What's, how's this parcel A1 fit in? The 3,500 feet that's to be conveyed down?
The, that's really, I can explain that to you, but it's, it doesn't really have to do with the title. The Allens had sued the LaLeaves for cutting trees down on this property and were looking for monetary damages. And as part of the settlement that we made with the, the Allens, the LaLeaves agreed to give them 3,500 square feet of property that also abutted their existing lot. So that's what that is, there's already been a deed recorded for that to, from the LaLeaves to the Allens. So that expands the Allens' lot and reduces the LaLeaves'.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with this?
It's not, it's not the.
Okay, and the, the driveway that in the 10-foot easement, is that there now or does it have to be relocated?
We're in the process of finishing it. What has gone on over the last few weeks is that the utility lines have, are being, the process of being moved from where they had been for 30 years to a site underneath the 10-foot easement. So the Allens have had a new pole set on the opposite side of the Hattaway Road. They've had the road opened and they dug a trench right up the 10-foot wide easement as seen on that plan, put conduit in it and it leads all the way up to the transformer box on the LaLeaves' property. And the lines haven't been drawn and connected yet, but the structure is underneath. The surface of the 10-foot wide easement has not been finished yet for a driveway, we're in the process of working that out, so.
When do you expect that to be completed?
We'd hope to have it done by now, but I'll tell you what, give you a little flavor for this. We had hired somebody to go do it, he showed up to do it and Mrs. Allen kicked him off the property because she was unsatisfied with what was going on. So I'm in the process of negotiating with Mrs. Allen's lawyers to try to work that detail out, the material, the timing for it and that sort of thing.
And the legal easement allows it to be paved and so on?
Yeah, we're not going to pave it, it allows it to be gravelled, so it's going to remain a gravel driveway, so.
So they're not even legally allowed to pave it?
Well, we're not fighting that fight right now. We got, we got as far as we are with some serious effort and we're not interested in paving it, so we didn't ask, so.
Mike?
Yeah, the, the, on that drawing there, which is obviously an older one, the green portion between the Metrados and the blue portion, was that the paper road originally?
Paper road was here. This, the blue piece is, was never part of the paper road, but it is, the south side of it was the north side of the paper street. And this line was the south side of the paper street.
So why was the paper street conveyed to the Allens and not the Metrados or split down the middle or?
Because of the way the, when, in 1973, when the, Mr. Brown conveyed this blue piece to the Westbees, he did not own this lot, he had already sold this frontage lot. And so the operation of the statute provided that the fee in the street, the whole fee, not half of it, went with this blue piece. And so by conveying a deed in which he described only this blue piece, he legally conveyed a 50-foot wide strip next to it, which was where the paper street was laid out. Believe me, I've been ringing my hand over this for six years, five years, and Mike has been, you know, I'm aware I'm getting paid to do this, but this is a real tragedy for him, so.
So I also can't help but notice that through this operation and the additional 3,500 square feet, the Allens' property, which was previously nonconforming, is now conforming?
Bigger.
Yeah, but it's bigger in, in enough that it was, it was not conforming part of this?
I don't know, it, it was probably conforming when it was cut out in the 50s.
Well, no, well, it, I mean, to the present.
Yeah. I've never focused on whether their law was a conforming law and they've not brought it up.
Mike, you done?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I mean, you've, you've, the easement is, okay, it's a legal easement, is it part of the deed?
The way it's worked now, the land court ruling established the easement. The land court ruling got recorded at the Registry of Deeds and so it became legal and on record and so anybody searching the title would see it. Then we negotiated with the Allens to move the easement from where it originally had been, which was, I said before, kind of on an angle that ran up the middle of the 50-foot easement, the 50-foot disputed area where the paper street was. Now, the new 10-foot wide easement is, it hugs the south line all the way up as you see on that plan, it's a straight.
So what does a variance give you that the easement doesn't?
First of all, the easement is not their property, it is still not considered frontage.
Okay.
So they still have zero frontage at this point?
Yeah, then the variance won't give them frontage?
No, but the variance will say that, the variance is an exception from the zoning regulation. But what the variance request is saying that instead of being required to have 150 feet of frontage to have a legal lot, they are asking for zero frontage and still make it a legal lot. Okay?
We're really looking for ratification of the status quo now and, and it's, we're doing it, and you got a point, I thought the same way in the beginning, that we have a 10-foot wide easement, it's recorded at the Registry of Deeds, nobody can stop us from accessing the property over that and any people who come and go from the property can use the easement. But buyers are going to be very skeptical about the property unless there's a variance showing that this is a legal, nonconforming lot. And that's what I'm looking for.
It'll be a legal, conforming lot once a variance is granted.
No, that's not really, don't misunderstand what we're asking for. We know that without frontage, this is always a nonconforming lot.
No, a variance then takes that requirement out and will become a conforming lot. I, I, no, I've been in the business for a long time.
Well, are you saying that if we applied for a building permit to put an addition on the house, we wouldn't have to come back here for another variance?
Yeah, I believe so. Because then there's a point of a variance.
It really wasn't our goal, but.
The point of a variance is take out the requirement and reduce it, then it becomes a legal situation, zoning compliant. I'm not going to say legal, it then makes it zoning compliant, so.
Because we've said that that lot doesn't need, doesn't need, so, because the way the variance would say that lot, that zoning regulation doesn't apply, so it is a legal lot.
It will be, it's a legal lot and the other part of it, because you need, frontage you need size. So we take out the frontage out, they sell out the side. The other thing is you must have access and with an easement, 10-foot easement, they have access.
Now, if, let's say we decline the request for a variance, could somebody then say, "Okay, you'd have a nonconforming lot, tear the house down." I mean, I don't think we'd ever agree to that, but would somebody argue that? I mean, there are cases where people build houses, you read about, I think there's a couple on the Cape and whatnot, and they end up tearing them down because.
This is a question I've been back and forth with town council for, for the last two weeks. The yes, the no, the balancing, what if and whatever else. And that's still a question that's not answered at this point, so.
But they have better standing with the variance?
Yeah. It's basically clear.
It solves a lot of problems for us.
Yes, it does.
And it makes, and it's a financial hardship if we don't have it, so it makes it very difficult, puts the LaLeaves in a real predicament, so.
Let me get to Patrick, if you have a question before, I get into some other questions and.
I'll say.
All right. Yeah, along with, with this and everything else, yeah, it just, Allen?
In looking at the letter from the Allens in their, their last substantial paragraph, there is a sentence in there, "Furthermore, as a landlocked property, they are subject to various legal restrictions which cannot be disturbed, vacated, amended, or modified by municipal board, and then any action to this end will be subject to land court proceedings." I just wanted if you, with your knowledge about this kind of area, if you could speak to that.
First of all, there are some statements that are in here that seem to be thrown up in the air. I don't know if there's basis to these, and the Allens, town council has gone through this letter as well. Now, landlocked piece of property, that's why, you know, that once we, if, if the board is to, I'm not going to presume anything, if the board is to grant a variance, yes, it's landlocked, but the access to it is, so it's, it does not have frontage. In the other regards, that there is the 10-foot easement for access. And again, you must have access to a piece of property for emergency services and whatever else. Various restrictions, that if there's an easement already in place, that says that the owners of property, whoever owns it, still has access to it and everything else. I don't understand what the restrictions are that, you know, being asked of us to vacate. Also too, in this, the same letter in that same state, or the next statement, oh, no, the very next paragraph, the last line is, "So why is this petition being entertained in the first place?" I read that maybe the Allens didn't understand the procedure or just throwing out another general question for discussion. Again, as I said earlier, this petition is being heard and decided on because any petition that comes before the board, we must take action on it, all right? So, no, it's not a matter of, well, geez, it has no standing and it shouldn't have to be heard in the first place, we have to hear it and make a decision on it.
I'd point out to you in their letter, if it helps you, in the prior page, the next to the last paragraph, it says, "We're very concerned that this is an attempt to circumvent those rulings," referring to the land court rulings, "to some undisclosed agenda. There's no trust between the LaLeaves and the Allens, I can tell you that, and I don't think I'm exaggerating it at all. I just don't think she trusts us when we come before the board to mean what we say." So I think that's what we're dealing with.
Speaking of the letter from the Allens dated August 9, 2009, I just want to make a couple of questions because I was going to hold off if we had a continuance when they could be present. But I wanted, in the record, you know, first of all, they had requested that, because they were on vacation, they cannot make it tonight, the hearing being postponed. In the second paragraph, they did make a statement in here, says that, Luton ZBA apparently does not meet in July because of its vacation schedules. That's not the case. There were no hearings before this board to cause us to have a hearing, meaning that in July. So it wasn't because of any vacation schedule of the board. I mean, this board has always been very compliant and knew to the wishes of any applicant, trying to get hearings, and we don't even put things off for too much because we don't want to make, have a hearing. So, no, I wanted to just answer that question. And they also say that the case impacts us far more than our neighbors and other, you know, abutters and, you know, question that I would have of the Allens, but they're not present, but I still think it's up for, you know, probably cannot be answered by anybody other than the Allens, but how would this impact the Allens? If we are to, if this board is to grant a variance, how would it impact the Allens? First of all, they would, it was not change their life, they can still live on the property, still have full use of the property as they have had for many, many years, that there would still be someone living behind them, there was a 10-foot easement for access to that piece of property, so that they're granting this variance, though I cannot foresee any impact on the, the abutters, the Allens. You know, whenever you talk about a challenge or an appeal, the first question that comes up is, does the person have standing? And the, that is a general term, which means, and the courts have said in the past, how would they harm? Okay, in other, and the same thing is, to what I just said, how would they be impacted? Unless somebody can point out, and no, no, if, no, the petitioner or Mr. Donlin or anybody else has an idea, I do not see any impact or lack or reduction in, or restriction in the use of the property for the Allens that they have had for all these years that they've been on that piece of property.
That's essentially our position, we're not asking to do anything new, we're asking to ratify the status quo. And as I already said, just recently, we agreed to move that easement to where they wanted it and we're asking you to say that's okay, 10-foot wide access on the plan that's attached there is part of what we're asking you to look at and say that's a part of the variance. There's no, we're not asking you to affect the property rights with your decision. There's no, we're not asking you to affect the property rights with your decision in any other way, seeking to reacquire something we lost in the land court. We're not asking you to make a judgment that is anything inconsistent with land court rulings. Those are already on record at the registry deeds, so I don't think you could anyway, but.
And you, you know, some stuff, I've been, I've been working with, trying to research there, prepare for this hearing, you know, information. Now, the variance would allow the same residential use to continue. It does not allow for any new use, any new development, or, or anything else to change on the property. So we're not opening up a kit of worms and saying, okay, like, if we were to grant this variance, that anything could drastically or dramatically change on this piece of property. It's just to allow the use that has gone on since 1984 to continue.
With the exception, potential exception, that they have enough land to subdivide if frontage was resolved, so I don't know if we need to put something in the condition saying that they can't subdivide.
What piece of property is subdivided?
That's three and a half acres. There's enough physical land-
But they don't have frontage.
...subdivide. I know, but we're waiting for that. We're waiting, we're waiting.
Right, but in order to subdivide, you got to go to planning board, the planning board will look at this case and say-
Yeah.
-it would not be allowed.
They probably won't grant it.
They could not, you know, subdivide that piece of property based on the zero frontage.
But they can put addition, they put on addition, et cetera, anything that any other-
I believe so, but I have not looked into that legal end of it.
No, but I mean, I don't think they should be restricted from doing that because they're in a, they're in a situation not if they're doing.
Right.
And we're not asking you to rule on that today. We're just asking you to continue.
No, I understand.
You know, Rod, you mentioned that, you know, they're in a situation not if they're doing, and I read this language in this letter, and they are using words like fraud and this and that. Is there a belief on the part of the Allens that this was a nefarious plot to-
I can't speak for them on that. I can tell you, I've been dealing with this for a long time, and we've never really understood all the roots of the dispute with them, so.
And again, you know, my, one of my earlier statements at the very beginning, based on the sensitivity of this case, a piece of property, and the parties involved, previous dealings and previous, you know, before this board and subsequent land court cases and everything else. That's why we are having this hearing and being conducted in a very technical manner, very professional manner, such that all the bases being covered in, without the Allens being present, we don't know what other questions they may have, comments, or any, any comments or responses they may have to any discussion we've had tonight. So a lot of this, that, other than what we have seen in their letter of August 2009, no, in fact, they say it's August 2009, I think they really meant August 9, 2014.
Just for the record, you have an in stamp on it that says August 11.
You see, they're 11:14 by the, yes, I, I did know that, too.
I have one question to the attorney. If all the Paddies were to sell these properties, and the next group of people come along, and they're all in agreeance, they could make this work by selling them a parcel of 50 feet?
Absolutely.
Okay. So it could get cleaned up in the future, where we'd meet all the requirements-
There's a lot of open land abutting this.
Yeah, but you have to go to the planning board where they-
Yes, I know, but at least that option's there.
Yeah. You know, I just want to follow up on what you were saying, John, just so that it's very clear to everybody, anybody watching this tape, or, you know, hearing about this case, that yes, it's not something that the Paddies can just do without anybody knowing about it. Yes, it would have to still go to the planning board for an A and R.
Right. But this, you know, at least there's that option of cleaning this up in the future, if the people want it.
Could take away the variance, yes. And again, any variance that's granted by this board gets recorded with the registry of deeds. If anything like that were to happen, it would go back to the registry of deeds. So if anybody does a title search correctly and fully, would pick up on, know what the latest situation is.
Question I have, in the Allens' letter, they mentioned an offer for a fee interest in the access area, which was declined. Could you, it sounds like-
There was a lot, lot of negotiations going on, and they only give you a little piece of it there, but that was during the land court litigation, and there were lots of efforts, there were mediations, we've been, Mike, how many mediations do we go to? Four, five, six?
Yeah.
And we, there were proposals on both sides, and there was money changing hands, insurance money coming into the play, and land transfers that were being talked about. And so it wasn't simply a matter of them offering to give Mike and Colleen some land to solve this problem. What they wanted in return was substantial value and not something he either had or was willing to give at every moment of the day. Frankly, the, the demands for settlement changed from time to time, so it was pretty difficult. We started this process in '05, and it was in 2013 that we finally achieved a settlement, and that happened the day or two before we were supposed to start a jury trial on the case in Lowell. So, we worked this really hard, tried everything we could, and we made a lot of proposals about settlement. And it's true that they at one point offered some land in exchange for some considerations, but we couldn't close the deal at that point, didn't, and the land court had to make its decisions.
All right. We have received a letter from, you know, Butter, you see, it's 8/21/14. To dear members of the board, we received notice of the hearing to be held 30th August 21 at 7:30 PM regarding case 834A. We did take some time to read the petition for a variance for the street frontage of 76 Tahatawon Road, made by Michael and Colleen Le- 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 Lee. We are sad to see the current owner, the Penn Life, who has handled legal dealings held years before their purchase. He has lived at 59 Tahatawon Road since July of 1990. Although the neighborhood has seen some changes over the years, one thing that has been there is the driveway located in 76 Tahatawon Road. We hope you will consider the hardship involved in the situation. We have enjoyed living here on Tahatawon Road for 24 years. Would like to see this matter resolved so that the Libber- Le- Le- Lee-
Le- Lee.
All right. Our family can relax and enjoy our neighborhood as they hope that when they purchase 76 Tahatawon Road. Sincerely, Terry-
Fu- Fu.
And Neil Johnson, 59th Tahatawon Road, Littleton, Mass. All right. Anybody in the audience who is a Butter who would like to speak to this case? Anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this case? Okay. Do you have anything further to present that we haven't already discussed?
I have nothing new, as I said. If you have questions, as you've discussed it among yourselves, I can try to answer them for you.
Board, ready to close the hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close.
Motion to close. Do I hear a second?
Second.
There's been a motion by, to close the hearing and second it. Any discussion on that before we close? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will make our decision in the appropriate amount of time, and you'll be notified.
Thank you. You should take your time. If I, if you like, I can leave this with you.
If you would.
Or whatever, should have been before.
I like color drawings.
I know. You have a copy of it in the petition.
Makes sense. Sometimes the law spilt my cases.
Well, that's, that's the problem. Looks, you know, the technicality.
Yeah. Yeah.
But also sometimes-
Okay, the time is 8:30 PM. I apologize to the other two hearings, you can push back a little bit, but that's the nature of this business. So I'm calling now the 7:45 hearing, case number 835A of Stephen and Sharon Martell, for a special permit or a variance from section 173, 10B1, for a proposed addition at 411 Lancet Trail. The nature of the hearing is that you would present first, introduce yourself and present your case, and board members will ask any questions and make any comments, and then the Butters will be asked if they have anything to input to your application, and you'll be able to respond to anything, okay?
I'm Sarah, I'm ready to introduce myself, please.
Oh, you have to introduce.
You don't need to, anyway, because we, they have a full board.
Yeah, they need to stand up. Yeah, everyone else, okay, and I have a full board, so I don't have to appoint an alternate. And so we're pretty informal here. If you want to come up and introduce yourself and start presenting, or if you're more comfortable there, you can do it that way.
Unfortunately, I forgot my glasses.
Want to borrow some?
I was sitting here thinking, geez, who's going to talk for us? Apparently I am. So I'm Sharon Martell, live at 411 Lancet Trail, and we've been there, oh, 27 years, I guess, and would like to, had often thought about how nice it would be to bump our kitchen out a little bit on the, as you're facing the house on the right-hand side. And I've finally gotten to the point with girls through college that we've, you know, saved enough money to do that. So, we submitted our plans, I guess, and then found out from our contractor that we were, I think, just under two feet shy of making the 30-foot from the street mark. But the house is not really in compliance anyway, just because the lot is small and the house is old, and so we came to see if we could get a variance to put that addition in.
But the house was built in '47, so where, where it is is where it is. The intention, we pushed back-
Forty.
Four feet beyond the front of the existing house, so we-
I think because we thought we were going to be within that 30 feet by doing that.
So let me just, let me just paraphrase.
First of all, you're asking for a special permit on a variance.
Oh, okay.
So let me paraphrase what you've said. You have a pre-existing non-conforming house and lot. Your picture shows that you front on 111 Lancet Street. The existing house right now is 22.4 feet from 111 Lancet Trail, is that correct?
Yes.
And that your proposed addition is going to be 28.1 feet from 111 Lancet Trail.
Correct.
The side of the addition is going to remain 17.9 feet from the sideline, so that's conforming, because we need 15 feet, right?
Right.
And your rear is lot 182U?
Yes.
That is one lot, 182.
Yeah, it's all-
Forty-one point-
So your rear is fine, and your other sideline is fine, except your non, your current non-conformities are?
That's not-
The, the current law is not fine, the addition is, is fine on that side, it's not going to, the addition isn't going to weigh back that side.
But you have to define all non-conformities.
Yeah, so I was just going to do that. So the current non-conformities are, you have 75 feet of frontage instead of the 150, you have a lot size that's 7,500 square feet-
Go ahead.
-instead of 40. You have a setback from the front that's 22.4 instead of 30. Sideline setback is okay, 15 on one side, on the other sideline it is 0.12. Okay. I just want to, I just want to review some technicality here. Do you know what the houses on either side of you are setback from 111 Lancet? Are they consistently 22, 23, or are they 30?
Uh, they're probably not 30. I don't think Keller Hears is eight feet back from us, do you?
No, I'd say they're consistent with ours.
They might be back a little bit further, but not much. I know that the Clydes tried to put a front porch on their house, their two houses up from us, and they weren't. So I think that-
They weren't, did they have to come for variance?
They did. They didn't even, they didn't, they said we're not even going to do it. But if you stand like in front of my house and you look down the street, we're all pretty much on the same line.
Mark, can you Google that up? Do you, you have to do that?
No, I couldn't verify anything. But looking eye-wise, like the light says, it looks-
I think it's a nice house. I think they're a little bit further back, but I know Jim didn't-
So there's one exception to our setback rule, and that is if the houses either side of you are less than 30, you can be the same as their average. That's one exception. The other exception to the special permit rule is that if you have a pre-existing non-conform- conformity, and you are not adding more non-conformity, the building inspector is allowed as a right to grant the building permit without a special permit. And I don't see that this one is adding any more non-conformity bill. That's what's bothering me about this technically.
Well, theoretically, it's not 30 feet back, so-
But they're not, they're already not 30.
It's not increasing the non-conformity, but it is a non-conformity.
Did Roland weigh in on this?
Yeah, Roland sent them here, right? Or your, did Roland send you here, or your builder sent you here?
Well, he said you need to go in.
Roland denied the building permit and said he had come here. I don't think it, I don't think it should have been denied, is my point, because-
You can read it, but it says. As long as it's-
Well, we've dealt with this a lot already, the past couple of years.
Yeah, we'll deal with it. I just want to make a point to the board, that I don't see any ability of ours to deny it only because of that. So this, those are my comments. Does anyone else on the board have any questions or comments?
Let's, let's take a look at the, you know, just, just for the comments. Plans have been submitted by Rick Eifler Yakadak, dated August 22, 2013. It shows the, the addition. Now, the addition, and I believe in your, your submitted letter, you feel that the dimensions of the addition are not overwhelming and a minimum required. You know, and the drawings reflect that as well. It is a one-story structure, which seems to be, it's a word I'm trying to find, appropriate for the existing structure, is not overpowering. It does appear to be a minor addition from appearance.
Can I ask questions?
Sure.
Are you putting a basement under it?
Yes.
Okay, full basement?
Yes.
That's nice. Much easier to do the plumbing connections with it. This will add good value to your house.
Well, and it's, it's a different little house, anyway. It, it's, I was looking at- There's quite a bit of room from like the grade to where the first floor starts, so, because I had said, let's forget the basement, because it won't cost us as much money, and they said, I mean, you're only looking at really like four or five feet of basement before, then you've got, you know, some more that's above ground, so you might as well just do the basement, so.
I drove, I drove by your property. It looks like it would be a nice addition to the neighborhood. I can't imagine that any of Butters would not think that this was a good addition to the neighborhood.
I know the Keller Hears are anxious to see a nice facade on that side.
Yes, and it's lovely to see some of these older houses being brought up to date and taken care of, and-
We like that, we like that little house.
It's obvious from the look driving by.
Thank you.
Do I have any of Butters to this petition? Yes, would you like to speak?
I know, I'm pretty comfortable with what Stephen and Karen are planning on doing.
Will I call on them? Do you mind sharing your name and address?
Sorry. My name is Dick Bersanti, and I live at 72 Mattawaniki, which is the next property.
And you're, you're in support?
Yes.
And I want to clarify my earlier comments. I, I, I believe that this could have been granted by the building inspector, but I understand why he sent you here, and I want to just address it so that you'll understand. The zoning bylaw reads that if there is no, I'm going to read it exactly, if there is no intensification, which is defined as any increase in any exterior dimension of that part of the structure which is non-conforming. So by his reading, even though you're setting it back more, you're still intensifying the width of how much is less than 30 feet. Do you follow what I'm saying? So I think that's what the building inspector interpreted and why you're here. So having said that, I have no problem with any of this. You qualify in every regard to the board's review, which is, all we have to find is that you are not substantial, more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conformity, and I trust that that's the case. So, board, I'll entertain a motion to close.
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? None. Okay, I'll also entertain a motion relative to the decision, if somebody wants to- Okay, I'll also entertain a motion relative to the decision, if somebody wants to give a...
I make a motion. I know Bill will fix it, but I'll say it wrong, but that's okay. I make a motion that we grant the special permit as requested and as outlined in the plot plan dated December 6, 2013, for 4 Manawaniki Trail.
What?
I think that's it.
Wannalancet Trail.
Oh. For Lancer...
Wannalancet.
Wannalancet. For Wannalancet. It says Manawaniki on this.
Oh, it's Wannalancet.
Wannalancet.
I'm sorry.
And the application says Wannalancet.
Yes.
Okay, anyone want to second that?
Second.
I said it right?
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. You are free to start this. Theoretically, a butter has 21 days to appeal it from the date it's filed with the town clerk. I'll try to get it filed pretty soon with the town clerk, but since you have no butters in opposition, and since you qualify, there's very little risk in starting your work without the written decision.
They can get the building permit. They don't need to wait the 20 days before they can build it.
No construction.
Oh, no, you can.
Once you get your building permit, yeah.
Okay.
I got you.
And...
Enjoy your new kitchen.
The building inspector's office, if you can confirm that.
I can't believe it. I won't believe it until I see it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you so much.
That's great, thank you.
And it was a lot easier than that one before us.
I was getting a little sweaty back there.
You needed a law degree for that one.
Okay, I'm going to open the hearing on case number 836A. Yeah, as soon as I open, I'm going to step down. I always open first, and that's always... It's 8:43 PM. Open the hearing on case number 836A, the case of G S Holdings LLC, and it's an 8 o'clock hearing. It's for a variance under section 17331 for a proposed porch at 270 Harwood Ave. Mr. Vice Chair, please make note that I'm standing down because I have a financial interest in the outcome of this case, and I will recuse myself.
Mr. Chair, I also have a financial interest in the outcome of this case. I must recuse myself.
Okay.
I am a butter for this property.
So you can stand down and speak as in a butter.
But every time you speak, Patrick, you have to leave the table, and every time you speak, you have to say you're speaking as in a butter and not as a member of this meeting.
Patrick, you have to go sit in the audience. You have to go sit in the audience. Sorry about the technicality, but we don't want the state coming down to us. Okay, that being said, Alan, will you be a voting member on this one? And Rob, will you be a voting member on this one?
Okay.
Okay. They went down through the list and started over. All right, the same procedure is going to be followed. I believe you probably were in the room when we started the other one. Board members, going to be the same procedure and everything else, so, Zener?
My name's Douglas Shar, I'm the owner of 270 Harwood Ave, and I'm before you to ask for a variance in order to add a farmer's porch to the home that I am building now at 270 Harwood Ave.
All right. You're asking for a variance?
Yes.
And why do you need a variance?
Frontage, not frontage, I'm sorry, the 30-foot setback on the front of the home. So if I were to add a farmer's porch, I would encroach into the 30 feet, and as it shows on the plan, if I were to add a six-foot, six feet out from the current front of the home, I would end up being just north of 25 feet from the lot line.
All right, the size of the porch is?
Six foot wide by 34 feet.
Which is 6.67.
Which I had him include the overhang.
Okay. So 6.67 feet by 34, oh, inch, and so therefore, and the house meets it, right?
Yes, it does. The house without the porch is 31.6.
Question is, no, first of all, for a variance, you need to indicate what unusual soil shape, topography, how it creates a heightship, and whatever else. My first question is, when I saw this, why, has the house been built yet?
The house is built, yes.
Okay. Why was the house located in this position such that it could not have been moved back to, so that you would not need the variance?
Due to the wetlands that are on the property, the conservation committee asked us to be as far as we possibly could be away from the wetlands, which is just shy, just north of 40 feet from the wetland flag.
Okay, we got the edge of wetlands noted on the plan?
Yes. And then also, given the shape factor of the lot itself...
And how does that play into it?
Well, it being pretty, almost triangular, it limited us to where we could put our septic system and so forth, which is currently located in the back of the property, and to maintain the 50-foot from the wetlands. And I have another copy, if you need.
Okay, well, Bill, there's a full-size drawing showing the septic plan and everything. It's rolled up. All right.
Yeah, I had my engineer just do this as, just so you could see the setback, so what, if it were granted, what it would be.
From the edge of the wetlands, what is the conservation commission requirement to the edge of, how close can the building be?
There is really no requirement at this point in the town of Littleton, yet.
Yeah.
But they asked for us to get as far away as we possibly could without...
Did they give you a specific number or an...
They didn't. We went, and I've been in front of them, and they've approved the 40 feet that I have. And then also, which isn't shown on here, and I don't know if it's shown on your drawing of the septic garden that shows the right-of-way for the property in the back.
Okay.
Which also limited us as far as pulling the house over or pulling it back anymore than what it currently is. So again, I know 268 Harwood has nothing to do with 270, but I also own 268, and I granted, again, a conservation issue. I granted the easement to go over 270 Harwood property to gain access to 268 Harwood.
Establishing, again, trying to get all the I's dotted T's across and whatever else, the uniqueness in, you know, soil shape, topography, whatever else. The heightship being that if you do not get this variance, what happens?
The potential is that I lose a client.
That's, let's get, okay, let me lead that to, why would you lose a client?
Because part of their stipulation in being interested in the home is to have a front of the house that would look kind of, for lack of a better term, stunning. Putting the farmer's porch with the trex on it, and it'll be a covered porch.
Let me ask you another question.
Sure.
I'm going to lead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Without this farmer's porch...
Yes, it'll be detrimental to me selling the home.
Can you still get an appropriate code compliant entryway?
No.
Okay. All right. So the thing, all right, the, what I'm trying to get at the heightship is that you need, first of all, it would need a variance for any kind of entryway, because you need a minimum of three foot six stoop plus whatever, and that still would fall in. Your potential client wants a farmer's porch rather than this, the normal stoop.
Yes.
Which would, no, still wouldn't meet the requirements of the zoning regulations.
Right.
Okay, because heightship can be looked at a couple of different ways, and not necessarily financial.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why I kept leaning that, not necessarily that your client want to buy it.
Right.
Okay? That may not be 100% legitimate.
Understood.
A lot of people gone with that, but there've been some court challenges that haven't held, but more important that you do need an appropriate building code compliant entryway, and the specific dimensions to that, and everything else. Okay. Anything else that you can present to this board, or would like to present to the board in regards to this request?
No, I think I've summed it up.
Okay. Board members, questions?
I have a question.
John, go ahead.
So the house is already built, right?
Yes, it is.
Well, it's framed, it's not...
It's framed, correct. It's not sided or drywalled or anything.
So if you continue to build it the way you would submit it to the plan to the building inspector, the house meets all the regulations? You're saying now that you don't have the right front for the entrance?
No, I wouldn't be able to put a three-foot, or a three-foot six, or a four-foot entranceway. I would have to raise my grade up so that I am roughly, so I could put two steps, because I do, technically, I do have 16 inches, so I could do this, I could get steps, granite steps or wood steps, whatever it may be, if I raise that grade up, which would bring me pretty high. I mean...
Were you aware of this before you submitted all these plans and went before the building inspector? And did, I mean, you moved forward with this house?
I moved forward with the house, absolutely, with the, and honestly, with the intent of putting the steps in.
Uh-huh.
With, absolutely. But now, looking at it and having it built and looking at it and from the street, from the side, any way you look at it, it's...
Yeah, I see the house.
Where are the steps? I don't see any plan, so...
The step, he should still meet all the requirements, right?
Correct.
Right now, you can, you don't need a variance if you continue building the house the way you had proposed.
That's correct.
Okay.
Is this the plan?
No, is this a, are you in the business of building homes?
I am.
Okay.
Where do we have a plan that shows?
Could you pass this down?
Is it, these are plans?
That's the plan.
Okay. Where in here does it show the farmer's porch that you are proposing?
No, 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 those are the plans for the actual home. I have not submitted because I came to you folks first.
Because I need to be very clear in this. You're asking for a variance to allow a six-foot, or actually, it's going to be six foot, 6.67 feet by 34 feet, okay? Where are the steps going, off the side or off the front?
Off the front.
Then that would change your request.
Okay.
The steps are part of the structure, because they are necessary to get to the porch. So how far out are the steps going to be?
They would come out approximately four feet. But I could also change that so that they come out the side, because it would, it wouldn't be detrimental to do, put it out the side, and that way I would...
My question then would be, though, going out the side would lessen the request of a variance, you know, how much you're asking for, because right now, you're asking go from 30 feet down to 25. If you're popping it on another four feet, it is asking for a variance of 30 down to 20, and we already round off a little bit.
Right.
Just give you a little bit, actually, so if you figure four feet, and actually it comes off four or six, you're going to have a problem, so... So would you be opposed to, if the decision is, the variance request is granted, the decision stipulates, well, first of all, it's going to stipulate the distance back, not to encroach less than a specific number. And if we calculate and say, you're asking for 25.15, we say not closer than, say, 24 feet. That would make you put the steps on the side, and they can be done very appropriately.
Of course.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Sure.
You couldn't have moved the house back further because of the wetlands, is that what you're saying?
Because of the wetlands, correct. I was...
You were committed to pretty much that.
To the 26 by 70 box that's currently there.
Did your engineer give you a building envelope that you had a building on your septic plan? Is this part of this envelope that shows your building site because of the wetlands?
Which part, the front?
Well, sometimes your plans will show where you...
There was no building envelope on my plans from my engineer, that, a box to build within. There was, there were setbacks that he did say that on the plan itself.
So you feel that if known, that if somebody had come before you built this house, you could have moved the house back?
I couldn't.
You couldn't.
I couldn't. I was, I was, where the box is...
You're committed to where that is.
That's 100%, I tried...
Okay.
Ten times if, to try and see how we could maneuver this home.
Did you build a house next to it?
I did.
Okay. All right.
Alan, any questions?
No, I don't.
Right?
No questions.
Mark?
Yeah, you know, historically, I'd say we've been pretty lenient with the board when, like the last case, where houses that were built years ago, you know, they need some relief. It's a little bit harder case when it's a brand-new house. You know, it's not even built yet, and here we are looking for a variance. Variance or special variance?
It's a variance, because it's not a special permit, because it's not, it's a conforming lot, conforming structure.
Yeah. You know, so, yeah, you're taking a conforming structure and making it nonconforming. It's a little bit, to me, I guess, it's a little bit tougher case to prove. Now, you got some legitimate points. You're kind of restricted. It's not like you got a five-acre lot, and you got 500 feet of setback all the way around except the front. You are kind of pinned there. Even that other house is exactly 30 feet from the line.
Yeah, that house is...
It does look like the setback from the road line, it looks like there's a fair amount of distance between the current pavement and the property line.
So if...
It would appear to be more than 30 feet.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if it were to be granted, the 6.67, the, that front of that porch would be 32 feet from pavement, not, obviously not from the lot line.
We have to go from the lot line, because any time the town could come through and widen the road.
Yeah. I mean, you're just trying to balance aesthetics versus rule, the regulation. Now, we talked a little bit about steps, how it would reduce that 25 feet to like 20 feet, and you said, well, maybe we put them off to the side. You ought to talk to the buyers, because, you know, I would look at that, and it wouldn't look as good.
Right, yeah. No, it definitely wouldn't look as good.
But it's doable.
It's doable, but we're talking an aesthetic issue anyway, because he says his client wants an awesome-looking or a stunning-looking front of the house. It's not, oh, my kitchen's too small, I need a bigger porch.
Maybe I misspoke when I said, oh, yeah, let's put the stairs...
It's an aesthetic, it's an aesthetic issue, though.
But, you know, I, the way you set it out, and I had the same impression and everything else, is that here's a brand-new house going up.
Hmm.
Build the house, and they come in and ask for the variance. I think the porch and everything else, first of all, you need to get access to the house, which wasn't considered, and I don't even know how the building permit is issued without front access appropriate and still be within the setbacks.
Well, it is. If he raises the grade, he only raises two steps.
He was going to raise the grade and do granite step, not a structural...
Correct.
...the landscape element.
Okay, all right. But even, okay, but the thing is, they're still asking for a variance to reduce the 30-foot setback to 25 feet. Steps are going to be four feet, and then there's a 30-foot down to 21 feet. And again, we're dealing from the property line, not from the actual edge of pavement. You know, so you get it, there are a lot of things with variances and everything else. We cover the uniqueness of the property, house being where it is, because it could not be moved back because of Title V and... be moved back because of Title V and conservation and whatever else. The hardship is, yes, you definitely need some kind of entrance. I'm not saying it had to be a grade, but the other thing is that as minimal, you know, intrusion as possible and still without minimizing the building itself. And, you know, seen a lot of houses that had tight frontage or whatever else and steps have gone off the side of the porch. Depends where the driveway is, the garage coming into it. A lot of times you want it on the side because it would
To that point, on this, on this point, it shows the proposed driveway coming off to the side of the house and so many houses will have a walkway coming off the driveway to the side of the porch. And in fact, it's probably more desirable than having people kind of trapezing up through the, through the lawn of the front and so forth. So it's not that unusual. Could look pretty nice.
Yeah, you know, that of the steps go off the front, then you're going to have more getting around and everything, turning. And turning, now you're approaching and, you know, closer to the front property line. But if anything should happen to the road, and again, you're going to have, you know, road width may change at any point. We don't know what's going to happen in the future. I think that it'd be an easier sell to have the steps come off the side and just hold it to as much of a minimum as possible.
Bill?
Yes?
My, my problem with a variance for this is that the, um, the conditions are created not by the lot or the septic or the driveway coming through it. The conditions are created by the plan that you chose to build on this site. You're saying that your hardship is created because of the specific plan. Well, there's nothing, we, you know, there's no obligation for us to consider that specific plan as the only plan that can be built on this property. I have a problem with it.
I cannot 100% disagree with you, but
I also have a problem with it in the context of Harwood Avenue where most houses are back in the woods and you can't even see them, that this house is, it's not typical.
Yeah, you know, I drove by it not too long ago and saw construction out there and even commented that, wait, this is close to the road. Based on a lot of the houses in there and everything else, not realizing where the property line was and that there would be a porch added on and everything else. So that which is before us, request for a variance to reduce the frontage from 30 feet down to 25.15 feet, so that such that a farmer's porch should be added to the front of the house. Okay? I just see what you just said, Jeff, about, yeah, it could have been a smaller house, could have been relocated or whatever.
Just a different
My problem is that, you know, this should be realized before the house even get built and come before this board for a variance. But it wasn't, so that, is the house been started construction or?
Oh, yeah, the home.
Yeah, so you get the house built, now you need
The, the frame of the house is that, and I haven't cited anything
But Bill, if
Because I came before you folks.
If prior to the start of construction, if this had been presented to us, there is no way we would have approved a variance, not. We would have said, go back to the drawing board and make it work.
Presumably, possibly, yes. Agreed. But, all right. Any others who want to have a comment or question?
Well.
Identify yourself, please.
Pat Joyce, 165 Te Hadauan Road. I think this is undue plan by this gentleman here that, I've been driving by that house and all, it's almost, it's almost on the street. He built three houses on this, on this property and I think a farmer's porch would not add to it. I think that he should have made his request when the house was built, before he built it. The three houses that are there now are, this, this one is the closest to the road.
Anybody else? Any further discussion or questions from the board? Do we have a motion to close?
Make a motion to close?
Second. Any further discussion on whether to close the hearing? Hearing done. All those in favor closing the hearings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We will make a decision within the appropriate amount of time and you will be notified. You can check with the, the building department office.
Okay.
Or they'll let you know when it's
Thank you very much for your time.
Now, this being a variance and everything else, that the decision will be done within the appropriate amount of time and written and filed with the town clerk. There is a 20 day appeal period before it can be enacted.
Okay. Is that a 30 day or is that the 20 day?
20 day appeal period once the decision is recorded.
Okay.
If we had to grant the variance, then there's a 20 day appeal period to, before you can actually get a building permit.
Okay.
Does mean that, you know, once it's filed with a clerk, you might not have it been granted or not granted. If granted, you can start the building permit process. You just cannot get the permit issued. If the permit, if the variance is denied, then, you know, you'll be notified by the board and the town clerk, then you can go whatever direction you want at that point.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Are we going to deliberate and make a decision now?
If you would like to. We're going to deliberate this, this case and, and make a decision.
Are we deliberating the first case?
Well, then, oh, the first case?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they could just
Okay, let, let's do the first, the first case. Okay. All right, the first case. Michael and Colleen, at, at Te Hadauan Road for a variance.
This is like Dickens Bleak House where they have the lawsuit that goes on for 50 years.
Be careful you're stolen.
Okay, well, it's the way, you know, it's so complicated, so complicated.
Yeah, to, to me
And I think the attorney did as good a job as could possibly have been done in trying to, you know, weave it all together.
Yep.
To me, this, the decision is very simple. The, the Lees and the previous owners all operated in good faith. Suddenly, they're stuck in a landlocked site. To give them something else to, you know, make their situation a little better, I see no problem with it. As far as the Allens not being here, it sounds to me like they're getting everything they need. They're getting more land, they're getting the ease, the driveway easement all the way to the property line edge. So I, I don't, I don't see any need to, you know, to do anything but approve it.
Mark, any comments?
Yeah, I, I tend to feel in favor of granting it. Like I said, it, if there's any harm to the Allens, it just removes one avenue of going after the Lees. Because again, it, you know, by granting it, I believe, based on our discussion, that it then makes it a conforming lot. And nobody can argue that, oh, that house shouldn't be there, or you can't use it as a house, or you can't use a pool or anything like that. And it gives the current owners as well as any future owners full access or full use of the property to do as they want, whether they want to do an addition or something like that. And again, there's no obvious detriment to the Allens other than what I mentioned before, possibly taking one, one, you know, taking away one avenue of aggravating the situation.
Well, it seem, based on what was presented to us, it seems like there's a stasis now between the Allens and the Lees. And I don't see how granting them a var, I, I don't, I'm not saying it's not possible. I don't see how granting a variance could affect that. It sounds, we've been, we've been, it's been represented that it just confirms the status quo and I take that, you know, at his, the attorney's word.
And would the board agree that our findings to include that under solar shape of topography, the, the shape is that, you know, sites now without any frontage? Okay. And that, you know, the hardship is that there's been a house there and they use it as a residential, single family dwelling as it occurred for many years. And hardship is, would take that away from them. So that, you know, do not see any way that the Allens would be harmed. They would not lose any rights they currently have or has always, have always had. You know, and that with the granting of a variance or zero frontage, they still have by court order, I guess, and the deed restriction, that the easement coming across, so they still have full access to the piece of property. So they have all the, so everybody can continue the life as they now have it. It just puts it in a legal frame, such that if the current owners want to sell, that it's marketable. I mean, otherwise, it's not marketable then. The question would, may come up that without the variance, would the use of the property have to cease? And become, as stated before, if landlocked piece of property, that could not be used.
I would like to address the Allens' request to postpone and, you know, I'm, I agree that we should, that we denied it and that, you know, we did deliberate it tonight. Being on vacation, to me, if it was a big enough issue, you work around it. And for us to, you know, allow a postponement would have provided a hardship to the Lees, added cost, delay and whatever things they want to do. So I think that was a, a good decision to do it tonight as opposed to postponing it.
And there was a lot, has been a lot of discussion in the background prior to tonight's meeting about the request for the continuance, not having the hearing tonight, but to some other time in the month of September. There's been some conversations, you know, trying to reach out to Allens with town council, to Mr. Darling and the, you know, Michael and Colleen. That it wasn't something that was just overlooked or given up very quickly. Glad you made a comment, Mark. And that's why, right away, I want to get into a full discussion on it and have it thoroughly thought out and, you know, had a decision that seemed to be appropriate with the discussion. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. I want to attend a motion.
I move that we grant a variance under Article 6, Section 173-27, for a frontage, a frontage exception at 76 Te Hadauan Road as descri, which property is described in a plot plan dated, approved by the Littleton Planning Board dated June 26, 2014.
In that motion, variance for the reduction of the 150 foot required frontage to grant zero frontage. And part of the findings to reflect that there is the 10 foot easement for access to the property.
Bill, I think that was a 50 foot easement then, or 50 foot frontage.
Yeah, it used to be, but that went away. Now they have a 10 foot easement.
But you said 150 feet.
100, okay, from the, okay.
Way back.
Corrected, yes, yes, I'm, I'm still thinking of correct. Okay, from the 50 foot
Yes.
That was appropriate at the original creation of the lot. Okay.
So variance for reduction for required frontage from 50 to 0?
50 feet, which was appropriate at the time of the creation of the lot. To
Zero.
Zero. I have a second.
I'll second it.
Do we want to say anything in there, you know, the, the zero frontage as a result of a court decision or something like that?
That, that will be in the findings.
Okay.
There are a lot of stuff that goes in the findings that will support the, the motion. And that's why, you know, we're just saying about the findings and whatever else, and I think that all the testimony and the facts and everything else would be put in here that the board has agreed for everything that we have agreed to or accepted as a fact. Any discussion before I take a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, ayes for granting by the number.
What a strange case.
Okay.
Yeah, one question.
Yes.
Who's going to write the decision and should, should we consult town council on the decision? Yes.
I have been in consultation with the town council.
So you, so you're going to write the decision?
As you want.
No.
I, I will do
But I mean, I'm suggesting that we should
I will, I, yes, I will do the decision on that one. Okay, next. Want to answer?
No, we did that.
We already did that one.
Who's going to write that decision? I'll, I'll write that decision. Oh, Sherri, Sherri can write it.
Cheryl.
No, 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 Sherri, that doesn't work out.
Okay. You're going to do that one? You're going to do that one?
I'll do that one.
Want to answer?
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And 256
270.
256 Great Road.
And that's just a different
What was it advertised then?
Oh, that, no, that's his address.
I know, I know, but that's Okay. Any others list, was, okay?
Yeah, the legal notice is right in there.
Okay. This will be, Howard, if I kept looking at this Great Road, then all of a sudden tonight we're talking about Howard and, and, you know, his plans and, right, all right, okay.
Well, that's his property, that's his
It's a business address, probably.
That's his business
It's his business address, GS Holdings.
That's why All right. We need to think about that one. Okay. Any discussion on this one?
Yeah, my first thought when I drove by is, boy, that, that house is close. If that's the one, you know, I might have an issue with it. Because you look at the one on the right and it's set back and everything and you go by the average frontage, it's all going to be 30 feet or greater on that, on that road. And it already looks close and, and porch is just going to make it even that much closer. I, I think it's kind of out of character for the neighborhood.
I feel we would be granting relief from the situation of his own making. I mean, it's definitely an opportunity to do it differently.
Yeah. Well, he was committed to build until a, a potential buyer came along and said they wanted a porch. And that really isn't a hardship, in my mind, to justify a variance.
I don't blame him for trying.
Can't blame for that.
Yeah.
But I, I, I don't really support this. I think it opens a can of worms for, I mean, it's interesting to me whether if someone bought the house, you know, he built it, bought it, then came to us and said, we'd really like a then came to us and said, "We'd really like a farmer's porch." I might think differently, but for someone who started from scratch and had the opportunity to do this differently, that's my problem.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, as a professional builder and everything else, have to take into consideration and know what's, you know, what he's doing and everything else, and knowing that he's building this house and has to locate it such that it's only like 32 feet from this property line. You know, you're not gonna build a house of this magnitude or this, you know, this appeal without someone on the front of it. You know, I, I think the whole thing should have come before us, before the house was even built, if that was the proposal or some similarity. The other thing is that, and I'm still questioning, I know it came up, that the location of the house and the property. Yeah, the septic system says it has to be a certain point, and, you know, the, the column says it has to be a certain distance away. And that's why I specifically asked, what number do they give you, and they just said, "Well, as far away as possible."
Yeah, so if he came in at 35 feet instead of 40 and had the farmer's porch, he, they probably wouldn't have complained.
Or, or let's face it, he'd have built a smaller house.
There was no specific as to, yeah, if, for the edge of wetland, you have to be 100 feet away, you know.
No, they're not.
He also gave away property by allowing the easement for the next house that he's building. So a lot of the hardships are by his own making. And, and it's a relative hardship. It's a house without a farmer's porch.
Yeah.
That covers 95% of the houses in Littleton, so.
And, and you know, that, that's a clear stipulation for the denial of a variance. If the finding is that the high chip is self-created, you know, you know, in this case, the, I think it is the feeling of this board that it is self-created, could have relocated, you know, the house. There was no specific from the Conservation Commission. I could have taken into account of that before you even built the house, so. All right. Any further discussion? Do we get a motion?
Well, what's the motion gonna be? Do we, you know, is the motion to, if I made the motion, I'd say I make a motion to deny the request.
Make, make a motion one way or the other. We'll take a vote and see where it goes.
I make a motion to deny.
Do we have to make a motion to close discussion?
Oh, okay.
No, 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 we close, close the hearing.
Oh, okay.
Close the, motion, go ahead.
I make a motion to deny a variance under Section 17331 for a proposed porch at 270 Harwood Avenue.
Second that? You said for the proposed porch?
For a proposed porch at 270 Harwood Avenue. I guess we could refer to as, as delineated on a plan dated August 19, 2014.
Well, I, I think you could just deny the variance for any structure within the 30-foot setback.
Okay. We could do it that way. Do you got that?
For any structure within the.
30-foot front setback. Do we have a second?
Can I second that?
Okay, um, any further discussion on that? Hearing done, none. Do we have a vote? All those in favor of denying the variance for allowing any structure within 30, the 30-foot setback? Signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. That's front setback, right?
Front setback. Um, anybody opposed? I could, John?
Who's gonna write that one? I, you know, Bill, I would just assume you write the hall because you're so prone to.
Lonely and scary in that hall.
Brought some chairs out there. They should put some chairs out there.
Well, you guys did a very good job. It's 9:25, and I will entertain a motion to close, because we did all our business before we started.
I second?
No, I need it for, I need a motion first.
Motion to close?
And I'll second.
You can't move and second.
It's actually to adjourn, isn't it?
Motion to adjourn, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing done. We are done.